As I said, we're about 35 minutes behind, so you know, we'll try our best, but just concise and questions. And let's begin. Before we begin our strategic planning, I'm going to ask Dr. Garza to start us off, followed by Mr. Smith.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair Members of the Board. I'm really excited to have this conversation today. But I'm also excited to introduce Marty Smith as our new Chief of Staff and who has been our...[30.01][30.01](applause) Marty's been on the job for a whole two months, maybe, something like that. But he's already having such positive impact on division-wide work. Of course, was an exceptional cluster Assistant Superintendent and Principal. But now he has some... He did a lot of great work and provided a lot of leadership around our Full Day Mondays. And I appreciate his hard work on that. Another one of those leadership opportunities. We say, "Here you go."[60.21][60.21](laughing) And he did a great job with it. Another important piece of the work he has moving forward is championing our strategic planning process, which is built upon the foundation of the Portrait of a Graduate, which we're going to start with the Portrait of a Graduate. And I will tell you that we've gotten a lot of national attention around this work. I think Fairfax County Public Schools really led the way and been very innovative and forward-thinking around 21st century skills. And there's been a lot of great work done with that. But we found out early on that a lot of our folks, a lot of our stakeholders, felt like it was like an initiative, something new and different, instead of, you know, kind of sitting over here. And so one of the goals that we wanted to accomplish was develop a Portrait of a Graduate that really was integrated in everything that we do. And we started this process, and I told Marty I promised I wouldn't steal his thunder. But we started, only started, with a 70-something-member stakeholder group, really broad cross-section of individuals, business leaders, parents, master teachers. All of our teacher organizations were represented. Every organization we interact with a lot, like NAACP, all of those were all involved. Two board members represented the board in that work. And since that time, it didn't stop there. We've had hundreds of others who weighed in. Remember during the listening tours, we asked those same questions we asked of the committee? So we had hundreds and hundreds of people submit feedback that was shared with the committee. We didn't stop there. It came to the board in January. There was a retreat, I believe, you all weighed in. And I've had a couple of other board members that continued to think about this work. STACK, our Student Advisory Committee. My point is, many, many people throughout our community have touched this piece of work. It hasn't been just, you know, Karen and Marty. It's been, you know, thousands of people who've weighed in. I think this is impactful and very positive work. And I will tell you, I've gotten tremendous positive feedback from even retired teachers who... It resonates with people. From the business community, it resonates. And so I think this is an exciting step in the right direction about, I think, the way that we wear, the direction we want to go as a school system. So I think it was important based upon, you know, just, I think, attention to this work is that it was shaped by lots and lots of people. So I'm going to let Marty continue the conversation further. And forgive me if I said anything you were planning on saying.
Well, so, thank you, Dr. Garza. Karen said earlier that, "I don't want to steal your thunder, so I won't say much." And I said, "You can say whatever you need to say, Karen. You signed my check, so you can..." And the board, you signed my check, too. But again, last October, Dr. Garza, she introduced the concept of Portrait of a Graduate at the Education Summit, if you remember back to that time. And here, one year later, we have a completed framework that provides clear descriptors of what we want our students who graduate from Fairfax County Public Schools to be able to do. And so before we actually get into the presentation this afternoon, I want to share with you a video that was shared at the Leadership Conference. Now, we know that many of you saw this video, but we have others in the room who have not seen the video, and some of you weren't able to attend. So we want you to get a sense of what our staff and our students feel and understand about a Portrait of a Graduate. So we'll go to the video.
I want to be...
I want to be...
I want to be...
I want to be a veterinary...
A doctor.
Computer designer.
Neuroscientist.
Something in science.
Someone that can, like, help other people.
I just don't know what I really want to be for you.
I want to be a lawyer.
I'm good at arguing.
Communication is so important because there will be less misunderstandings, and people could talk through problems, and there'd be less fights and wars throughout countries if they talked with each other.
Someone that can travel around, can interact with different races, different cultures, and everything.
Problem-solving can help you learn because you learn how to solve problems, not just inside school, but outside of school.
We need to support our staff with the training they need to be able to lead our students. We have to create the time, and I think most importantly, we have to give them permission. It's okay to try, to make mistakes, because that's where the learning really happens.
I think that if we really want to see what a kid can do, give them opportunity. Give them opportunity to direct their education and figure out what they want to learn and how they want to learn it, and letting them do that.
We must teach our students how to work together. Something as simple as taking turns. Something as simple as listening to another person. When our children grow up, they will teach that to the rest of the world.
We're learning about equality, and that, I think, that's going to help us a lot in the world.
When I came here, I didn't really speak English that much this year, and, well, now I speak better English, silent English.
You choose who you hang around with, and depending on that, that's the kind of person you're going to be.
I had this thing called "Ice in the Mine," and I had to build a structure that would hold up weight. And I had to work as a team to, like, build everything.
I think the key is engagement. When kids believe that teachers and professionals in a building care about them and are invested in them, and will do anything to help them succeed, then you have a relationship, and that builds a community.
Help students and staff tap into the joy of what they're doing, whether it's the joy of teaching or the joy of learning. I think in that joy lies the energy that we need to really bring artistry to what we do, whether it be a student or a teacher.
We've got to be able to teach our students that it's important. Your thoughts are important. We care about what you think, and that you guys have the answer.
Last summer, I went to Sudan. I saw people who weren't as fortunate, and they were living on the street. And my parents would give me money to go to the store, but I would give it to them instead.
The most creative thing I've ever done would be starting a little group with my friends to clean up around our area.
We'll use these skills we learned today and use it in the future, so someone has a problem, we could help them.
I think that is essential to school leadership, that you are constantly creating, reevaluating, and seeing if what you're doing is the very best thing that can be done for children and with children.
We can't wait till they graduate and say, "Okay, go out and be collaborators, you know, solve the world's problems." We have to start building those soft skills now.
There has been a shift in what students need to know. In the 21st century, the emphasis will be on knowledge and habits of mind.
You know, change is inevitable. Growth is optional. You're always changing. We're always evolving as a profession.
We really have the future in our hands. That kindergartner who's a member of the class of 2027, are we ready to prepare them for 2027? We need to be ready to say yes.
I have a Portrait of a Graduate.
Portrait of a Graduate.
Portrait of a Graduate!
So, that's an excellent video. This is my 16th Leadership Conference, and I've seen lots of videos that our folks in multimedia have produced, and this is by far one of the best that we've seen. And we need to put a shout-out to Mary Beth and her crew, because that was (applause) just an excellent video. So as Karen said, this work did not happen in a vacuum. We engaged in quite a bit of public engagement with Portrait of a Graduate. We worked with Ken K. We had a task force of over 70 individuals. And so I'm going to share just a bit of what Karen shared earlier. But we did work with over 70 individuals who provided lots of good input as to what we would expect from our graduates here in Fairfax County Public Schools. It would be difficult for me to talk about Portrait of a Graduate without also talking about an individual who had quite a bit to do with that public engagement, our former Deputy Superintendent Dan Paris. If you have seen one of Dan's presentations about Portrait of a Graduate, you would know that his 60-plus slides shared quite a bit of information around the passion that he had for this work. And so a lot of what you will see today is due in part because of Dan's work with this entire implementation. But he worked with over 20 different groups, where he took his presentation, whenever he was asked to do so, principals, community members, to talk about this notion of a Portrait of a Graduate and what we expect our students to be able to do. And then lastly, as Karen said, we had multiple listening tours, where Karen went out and shared her vision of this concept of a Portrait of a Graduate, and it was well-received by our community members. And so again, this work did not happen on its own. It did not happen in a vacuum. It happened with quite a bit of community input and board input. It's important to note that we've been very intentional about our language around the Portrait of a Graduate. And we're all very comfortable with the four Cs. It's been part of our lexicon for quite a few years now. Strong communication, strong collaboration, and critical thinking, and creativity with students. But what's unique, I think, with our plan, and here you can see behind us, behind us is this notion of a global citizen. And you, as a board, you have been out front as a nation in terms of ensuring that our students view themselves as global citizens, as global thinkers. So that, again, this whole idea of looking beyond Fairfax County is unique, and that's, again, part of your vision as a board. Another piece that's unique, when you think about what we expect our students to be able to do, is this sense of them being goal-directed and resilient individuals, with a focus on wellness, with a focus on this work-life balance that we're focused on with our students and our staff as well. So again, as a board, you're in the forefront and ahead of where we are as a nation. I thought it'd be interesting today, as we go through some of this information, I'm not going to read all of these descriptors to you. This information and this language isn't new to you. You've seen it in a variety of different ways. But I thought it would be interesting for me to think about myself as a graduate of Fairfax County Public Schools. I'm not a Fairfax County graduate. We have graduates in the room with us here. I'm not a Fairfax County graduate. But were I a graduate, I might look at a few of the descriptors and see how they would apply to my current job as the Chief of Staff of Fairfax County Public Schools. And as an exercise, you might want to engage as your current role as board member or in your current role professionally. How this might look for you, were you a Fairfax County graduate? Now, a few months ago, Dr. Garza said that, "Get a good look at me, because I will look very different a year from now. Maybe a few more gray hairs."
I didn't tell you that, Steve, but we do take before and after pictures.[836.13][836.13](laughing) Because you do change.
You do change. But if I were to think of myself as a graduate in Fairfax County Schools, under communicator, I might think about my role as Chief of Staff, and I might look at our third descriptor, speaks in a purposeful manner to inform, influence, motivate, or entertain listeners. Now, that has a true focus in my work that I do on a daily basis. Under collaborator, I might choose the descriptor of demonstrates the ability to work interdependently within a group to promote learning, increase productivity, and achieve common goals. As a global citizen, I might think of myself as an individual who acknowledges and understands diverse perspectives and cultures when considering local, national, and world issues. And we had some issues around Full Day Monday, and we had to understand and think about many more things than what were just happening with us here in Fairfax County. Under creative and critical thinker, I would... I've been doing quite a bit of problem-solving, so engages in problem-solving inquiry and design of innovative solutions to overcome obstacles, to improve outcomes. And I think that, as I look at myself as a goal-directed and resilient individual, I'm going to point to two of these bullets. And going back to Dr. Garza telling you to take a good look at me, engages in healthy and positive practices and relationships to promote physical and mental wellness. It's an important part in this role. And then persists to accomplish difficult tasks, to overcome academic and personal barriers to meet goals. So when you actually engage in this kind of an activity, it makes the Portrait of a Graduate real, not only for our students, but for ourselves. And it helps us see that this isn't just another initiative. It's what we do on a daily basis as adults, and it's what we want our students to be able to do when they graduate and leave us in Fairfax County. I think that we might be able to get on track with our schedule today, because I want to provide some time for discussion around this point, and know that this work for Portrait of a Graduate will be used in our next presentation around the strategic plan. It is the actual heart of our strategic plan. It's the heart of the work that we do, and it's our reason for being in Fairfax County. So I want to take some time now to allow you to ask any questions you might have about Portrait of a Graduate, about the descriptors. I know that there has been some discussion about some of our categories, and so there may be some discussion about that. And hopefully, I can answer your questions this afternoon.
Before we start, a couple of other things I might add, and thank you, Marty, is you'll see the icons that have been developed, and we think these would be a valuable instructional tool that could be used across the school system, even in kindergarten classrooms, all throughout our division, as we really help students think of themselves as a communicator, collaborator, global citizen, critical and creative thinker, and goal-directed and resilient. So we believe there's a lot of valuable instructional benefit to the icons. Students are very familiar with icons as our... I mean, it's just part of our world. So I think that's beneficial moving forward. And then we have some wonderful examples of this kind of work embedded in our system, like our fifth-grade project that we do is our Global Awareness and Technology Project, which is real-life, project-based learning. We see more, I mean, in a lot of the skills that we talk about in terms of, it's not changing the content. We still are going to teach very strong math and science. It's not changing the what, it's changing the how. It's changing the how we help students use that knowledge in new and novel ways. So, thank you, Marty. Good job.
Thank you, Marty. And now I'll have comments and questions from my colleagues, starting off with Ms. Evans.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank you, Mr. Smith, for all your work on this. And as you said, it was a great collaborative effort, and I think that it has developed into an absolutely excellent tool and basically, in a way, rebranding, rebranding FCPS and saying not only who we are, but who we want to become over the course of time. So I think this gives us an excellent pathway into the next step of going into the strategic plan. I wanted to raise one thing, which I've raised before, both at the retreat and in emails. I continue to feel that that last column, we haven't truly captured what we're trying to say with the word "goal-directed." And I say that because, you know, words are important, and I think we've spent a lot of time thinking about the words. And to me, that still does not quite capture the sense of the healthy practices and the character and ethics piece that's so important there, the responsibility piece as well. So, you know, I've had some, I've batted around some ideas for different things. There's no one perfect word, but, you know, I've thought about healthy, but that got pushed back apparently at the Stakeholders' Meeting for a variety of reasons. And I've thought about caring. Some people, you know, that could, I thought, go with our FCPS cares idea. But the other word that I came up with that I want to put out here today is the word balanced. And I think perhaps the word balanced does a better job than goal-directed of describing what we really are trying to do with this last column. And I say that because goal-directed, I know the origin of it. I understand how we came up with that. I think to someone coming to a cold, it sounds like we are once again saying it's just all about achievement. It's all about success, as opposed to how we behave and having the healthy behaviors and character. So I wanted to throw that out to my colleagues. I would appreciate people reflecting on that and at least considering that as an amendment to this. I also think it actually works with that icon very well, too.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Next, Ms. McLaughlin.
It's perfect for me to follow Ms. Evans on this one, because I really do appreciate all five of these columns. I can't imagine the amount of time and effort to distill so many well-intentioned and great thinking of a county of a million people into, you know, five areas that we hope to capture. But I am curious, because since I love the system embracing Fairfax cares, and what cares then breaks down and what it means, and yet, it's the number-one word missing here in our five headers. Because I do think, as we go out to our community and say, "This is a school system that cares," and I think it's probably one of the things that gives such comfort to our families when they entrust us with their most prized possession, their children, it's a system that cares. But we're also wanting to develop them into being individuals who care, care about their community, and care about making a difference. And so it is something that I would say is the number-one word. I would love to see in that fifth category, that somehow we really capture, even with the goal-directed, if that wanted to stay, goal-directed, caring, and resilient individuals. Just inserting the word caring, when you look down the column of the five descriptors of what you want that fifth column to be, if we didn't capture that, I think we should, because I think it's one of the most important things we can do is raise young adults who care about the people they work with and the community that surrounds them. I mean, collaborator is still a different distinction. Collaborating and being cooperative is different from caring. And so I do hope that while we're trying to finalize this and bring this out, I would think we'd be very remiss not to have caring in there, in that fifth column there, at the top, put right in there, and make sure we capture it then that way. But I would just say, Dr. Garza, maybe if you look at the five different distinctions that are listed within that fifth column, maybe that's the reason caring's not in there is because we didn't necessarily capture it as one of those five things that we want to make sure is emphasized among our graduates.
So are you suggesting that we somehow integrate caring in the bullets underneath the fifth column?
Yeah, I think you need to integrate caring into one of those five, in that column of five bullets. But I also think that when I think about, even as a parent of the school system, what I want my three boys to graduate with is not just that they're goal-directed, as Ms. Evans pointed out, which is achievement-based, but did they come out being caring as well as resilient?
The FCPS cares is something that we developed as a leadership team, based upon what our theme for the school year was going to be, based upon all the different opportunities we've had to assess perceptions of the school system and what we needed to work on. And we tried our very best to make sure that these... We didn't want despair at work. We wanted this to make sense. And so that's why you see some overlap, which I think is good. I'm happy to go back and see how we can integrate care into that last column. I will tell you, and you had two colleagues that served on the committee. I'm trying to honor the community's work also at the same time. Initially, that last column, which I will tell you that I know that we can build care into that last without a problem. In terms of the header, it was originally self-directed and, Kim? No, it was another word.
Responsible.
Responsible. It was self-directed and responsible. And based upon feedback we've gotten from you and others, we added the word, and I think it was a good change, resilient, because resilient connotes individuals that are healthy and balanced. I also think goal-directed, I think the conversation around this has been very important, because words are important. I'm not sure that goal-directed always connotes achievement-focused, because I think there's lots of ways we, as individuals, can have goals. And I think we expect the adults to have goals. I think we can model for children goals, but it's all a matter of balance. I mean, it's a matter of degree, right, and having appropriate goals. So I think the suggestion around caring, I think absolutely, we can come back and see what we can do to provide, to reflect that in that last column. I don't, you know, I'll have to, I don't know, that makes it maybe a little bit too long to add it in the header itself, but that's, you know, this is something that you all have to support and feel good about, and ultimately, we would need you to prove it. So we're going to reflect the goals, the desires of this board.
And I absolutely believe it's so important to try and honor the input and the work that's come forward, but in the end, it is this board of 12, along with you, that has to say, "In the end, did we capture what we think is most important?" And it does concern me a little bit when I think about one of the things that is so important in terms of individuals who go out and make a difference in the world. I don't know that we captured that yet, and that's what worries me a little bit, but I...
I agree with that on the care. I do agree with you on that. The other thing, just because I've had a conversation with some of you, but maybe not all of you, about the healthy piece, the committee debated this quite a bit, because that was something that was important to you, I know, but is important to the larger community. But they were also very sensitive that this reflected, you know, the diversity of our school community, and that there are some children who are unable to demonstrate health in the same way we see it, just because of unique needs that some children may have. So there was some concern about that being in the goal statement, that some students would be... Because we wanted students to be able to say, "I am a communicator. I am a collaborator. I am," and make those really affirmative, you know, statements. So that was why the committee was a little reticent to put that in the header. Some children would not be able to see themselves in that.
All right. Thank you. I just want to just speak very briefly just on some of those things. As being part of this committee, the caring piece was implied in a lot of these things as the conversation went on. And I think the fact that we don't have that word, I think, I understand your concern. But if you look under collaborator, if you look under global citizen, I remember the conversations particularly surrounding those, respectful, acknowledging and understanding diverse things like that. So that particular one was implied in, I think, almost every one. And that last column, when you talk about that, how we can incorporate that better, that last column was probably a compressed column from maybe seven, seven different columns. We got it down to five. So it became, it became the seventh, the fifth column became a little bit of a catch-all, and that can cause problems and can cause things to fall out. So that's why I certainly wanted the board to weigh in and see what your perspectives are on this as well.
Yeah, because I think what's most important is we talk about those headers are what, you know, we said words matter. Well, if words matter, and we imply caring, or we reference caring below, but we don't consider it one of the more important things that we want our graduate to be, then that's where I'm struggling, is because I hear what you're saying, maybe it's embedded in there, but these five categories are saying, "What do we think are extremely important?" And I wouldn't want caring to be implied. I'd like to actually have it a stated thing. Goal-directed and resilient, to me, honestly, are important, but if you don't have a caring individual leaving this school system, I think that's a huge deficit, and so not to profile it, it concerns me.
I hear that. And I'll speak at the end, and I'll specifically speak about the goal-directed piece and how I know that came to be. So Ms. Strauss.
I was going to say, one of the exciting things about developing this is that we have an opportunity to think far out, because really what we are trying to reflect is not our experience as parents. I think it's very important that we listen...
I think it's very important that we listen clearly, particularly to the voice of the youngest parents, because it is those children who are just starting now who will enjoy the greatest impact, and they are the ones that we need to work the hardest on because we are preparing them for the farthest out into the future. And certainly, the Fairfax cares, you know, this is, we are, you know, obviously reflecting that and a lot of other things that we are doing. The addition of the global citizen and in the statement of contributes to solutions that benefit the broader community, that's a very important step for us. And in the last piece, resiliency, if you read mommy blogs, if you listen to the voices of the parents who are in their 20s or early 30s, one of their concerns is can kids, can kids meet challenges, fail, pick themselves up, dust off, go on? Do they have enough focus or confidence or independence? Because life has huge challenges and huge challenges that parents can't save you from. So it is when we talk about balance, we talk about resiliency. It is how do we help kids in this way to be balanced and to have them face a world that we can't see yet? But I think it, when we set a strategic plan based on these kind of descriptors, it isn't so much that the 12 of us are thinking in our own heads, where is it? It's carefully listening to a broad enough voice, a broad enough trend, a broad enough understanding of the overall mood and shift of the community and then what we attempt to understand of the future. So it is important that we did this huge, broad conversation into the community plus an awful lot of, I think, careful listening, reading, and really looking between the lines, particularly of the younger parents. And I feel that this does reflect pretty well where this broader stance is going, but it's an exciting step. When we've done these processes, when we've done these things before, we have never been able to take this deep cut in an attempt to really grasp and understand where particularly our youngest children or youngest parents, where it is that they're going to need to help really the next generation go on. So, and I was going to say, in the goal-directed and how that relates to resiliency, it is understanding that you're going to need to make decisions, you're going to have to fight, figure out your passions, you're going to have to follow on. In other words, the strength to go on, to find directions, and you may change directions many times, but you need to have enough focus to be able to have the interest, the passion, and the courage to go on. So, a few thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Ms. Schultz.
Yep.
Schultz? Oh. Okay. I will come back to you. Mr. Valkov.
I'm a little concerned about us starting to revise this. I realize that it's our prerogative to edit it and change it, but I think, I think what I would want to say is, you know, is it fundamentally going in the right direction? And I certainly think that it does. I really want to respect all the work that's been done, and just as a matter of allowing these folks to have the time to focus, I think it's time to bless this and move on. So I certainly understand that each of us has, to varying degrees, things that we might differ with. I really hope that we'll just approve this. I think it's wonderful, by the way, and the logos came out magnificently. So anyway, I think we should focus on accepting this and moving on.
Going back to Ms. Schultz.
So thank you, Ted, for tripping my gray cells there. I couldn't agree with you more. We could, as a board of 12, wordsmith this into, you know, the next century, and none of us would be happy with it. I did give an idea to Dr. Garza. That's five columns. The word cares, those five letters. Each one of those titles has one of those letters in it, and so she could highlight, you'd have to switch creative and critical thinker with global citizen to get it to spell out, but you've got one of those letters all the way across, and so you could highlight it. Anybody who watches Masterpiece, Mystery, and the little red letters at the end, you know what I'm talking about. So inherently, it's not that it's implied. I think it is imbued, and there's a big difference between implied and imbued. It is imbued in this entire process that you wind up with a student who cares, is thoughtful, is considerate of others. And so I'm happy with what they've done. I think we could all be some percentage happier, but sooner or later, it's got to be good enough for government. And I think we're so far past that that we've got to celebrate the work that's been done at this point.
So if I may interject just briefly about this whole idea of care, when I think back to my time as a second-grade teacher and what I would want my students to know and be able to do, as I look at some of the wording, active listening strategies, there's a sense of care around that, respects divergent thinking to engage others, acknowledges and understands diverse perspectives under creative and critical thinking, where your ideas, emotions, they're expressed meaningfully. So care is imbued within this document. All of those words are words that we would think of when we would think of even our own children who would be caring members of a community. So there are ways to, you know, point to that as we look at this document.
Thank you. Ms. Reed.
I think you want to echo my comments this morning, and that's not losing the forest for the trees. And so I first want to say, this is an excellent, excellent job of everyone who's been involved, and you, Mr. Smith, in particular, love the icons. I love that this is something that people can all understand and also take and translate to their own individual jobs, no matter where they are in the organization, if they're a student or a teacher or a custodian or whatever. So all that is wonderful. But I do share the concerns, I have to say, of Ms. Evans and not trying to get into the weeds, not trying to be overly critical, but when Dr. Garza asked, have these captured the sentiments of the board? For me, that, the heading on that fifth column still doesn't quite capture this idea about some of these character traits that I feel. We were talking about whether it's confident, compassionate, caring, I don't know, balanced. I'm not sure I know the right word, but my point is, if you only read that, and for many people, that's as far as they go, and I have to say, I'm very sensitive to this issue of being goal-directed, to the point, you know, I see it here a few times, meeting goals, setting challenging goals. I wonder sometimes if we're not implicitly pushing too much, and we see evidence of that with some of our kids, I think they're stressed out because they expect, they're expected to be perfect. They're pushed so much. And so, you know, maybe I'm reading into it, but I bristle when I see goal-directed a little bit because I feel like, I loved what Ms. Strauss was saying, and I apologize, I'm not being very articulate here, but when you said, "Oh, well, kids fail, and they get up and they try again." Yes, that, maybe that's resilient, right? Right? But
Resilience is broader. That's part of it.
That's part of it. That's part of it. But I, there's something about some of the character skills, because I think you can be a good communicator, collaborator, citizen, creative thinker, and not be a nice person, not be a good person to work with in a team. You could be nasty, you could be a cutthroat, you could be a liar, you know? So I feel like somehow this column is where we try to get at some of the character issues, and maybe somebody else can take my thoughts and try to make them more articulate and concise. And again, you know, maybe it's just inserting one word, or maybe not. Maybe my colleagues say, "Well, that's crazy. You don't need to do that." So I just wanted to throw that out, to share your concerns.
I'll take the chair's prerogative and just speak briefly to that, because I was going to tell my story about goal-directed. I cannot, again, remember, we were kind of condensing several different columns, but the tide turned in communications with goal-directed when the parent of a special-needs child spoke. And that particular parent spoke in opposition to some other words that were out there, was very much in favor of goal-directed because that individual felt that her child could take very small goals, and she gave very heartfelt examples about what these goals could be for her child. And they are, you know, getting their self-dressed for that morning. And whatever words were out there on the table, and I'm hesitant to tell you of the many that were out there, I think the tide of the conversation turned at that moment when that particular parent, and there was a lot of sentiment that goal-directed can mean many things. It can have that negative connotation, but for that particular parent, well, the negative connotation in the sense that the overachieving pushiness of being goal-directed, right? But that, you have to realize that that does stand out in some people's minds. But I did want to share that part, and that's why I appreciate being on that committee, to be able to, you know, I can't remember everything, but I do remember that turning the tide, and I do remember that particular instance of goal-directed changing the thinking and thinking about it in that way, and that parent, and there were a few others that said, yes, my child can only do small things, but setting small goals and giving them, that's what I want for them. So I just wanted you to know how that conversation evolved, and thank you for indulging. And we'll now go to Mr. McElveen.
So I appreciate that story, and I appreciate a bit of what Ted said. I think we're at the Queen Elsa moment where we just have to let it go. And I think, you know, I would like for it to say caring somewhere in there, but I think just like with start times, we have to honor the process, honor the fact that 70 community members came together, and this is what came out of it. So, you know, I'm supportive to that extent. One question I have is, maybe if we could pull up the logo attachment? I don't know, I'm having trouble recalling where we, as a board, came down on using the student pictures as opposed to the little logos. So I just don't, I'm blanking on that conversation. Obviously, this is where it is now. Beautiful pictures, beautiful kids. I think these things are always problematic for organizations because when you try and be diverse, it's very obvious, and then you eventually don't capture all the diversity in the system. So I think that that continues to be a problem. I think you might still want to discuss that. You know, I don't know how we fix that, and I won't be more specific. One more overarching question I have, and this is for the community as much as it is for us, is when we look to incorporate the POG, where do we see that in relation to the student achievement goals? Do we, are we still going to measure our system based on the SAGs, or are we going to use the POG? Where do you see?
Right now, you'll see at the top, we put the student achievement goals at the very top. See that at the top? Student achievement goals, pursue academic excellence. But I think down the road, we'll have to wrestle with this again about how do we, when we've complete the strategic plan, how do we want, how do you as a board want us to report out on that strategic plan? I think we're always going to have the first one, for sure. I mean, academics, we must report out to you all, academics. I mean, that's a fundamental, we have to be accountable. So, but I think where we might have, you might want to talk about it in the future, once the strategic plan is completed, how do you want us to report back to you on the essential life skills and responsibilities of the community? Does that look different into the future? So I don't really have an answer for you right now. I don't see it as dramatically different because when I look at, we're always going to have the, you know, we're about student achievement, we're about academic excellence. We're always going to have some version of goal one. I think goal two and goal three are very much, you know, similar with where you all have been wanting to go for a long time in the portrait regard, it's just reflected differently. So I don't know that I have an answer for that because to me, I think that's something the board's going to have to definitively weigh into as we complete the strategic plan. I just hope we don't have the student achievement goals over here and the strategic plan over here. Now we're reporting even more out to you than what, you know, I think at some point in the near future, I think it's going to be timely for us all to work together and say, okay, so what does this mean for us moving forward on what we look at, how we look at data and report out? Is that a fair answer?
Yeah, that's very helpful, because I don't think any of us want to lose those endless days we spent trying to refine the SAGs, so I'm glad they'll still be there in some form. And for those of you who weren't at the first joint budget committee meeting, we showed them the POG, and they were, some of them were upset that it wasn't reading, writing, and arithmetic focused. And, you know, that's a conversation we're going to have to continue to have. You know, some of them got it when we talked about it for a little while, but some of them just aren't. So, you know, we have our work cut out for us.
It's interesting, as many places that I've taken this out to for people to react to, that was the first time, really, first time I'd ever had anyone say, well, what about math and, you know? I think most other, I think most people that really have thought about education a whole lot, it resonates with them because they feel like we've gotten too much into drill and kill and not enough application and creativity and helping children be problem solvers and really use what they learn in new and novel ways and see interconnections, right? Interdisciplinary kinds of models. So that was, yeah, we've got some more conversations to have. Yeah, but it was interesting.
Thank you. Mr. Stork.
Thank you. I have a little bit different orientation. Global citizen, and I presented this to a education committee meeting of the Mount Vernon Council of Citizens Association, a very strong supporter of schools and strong advocate in general of everything that we do. And it was interesting, we didn't have much time to talk about because there was a whole bunch of other stuff in the meeting, but the, one member of the audience pointed out something to me that I really hadn't thought about, but it resonated with me, and I wanted to share with you, and I see the need to, I guess, to amend this in one way or the other, to try to address it. And under global citizen, we don't explicitly talk about some of our student achievement goals, and we have several of them all related to kind of our knowledge of the government, our advocacy, our participation. I mean, these are things that are specific to us as citizens or people that are responsible, members of the society. So, and the person who brought it up was not trying to, you know, wave an American flag over top of this and say, you know, let's make sure it screams red, white, and blue, but they were trying to make the point that I think we all can appreciate, particularly in this world, and when you have some organizations who are out there beheading people because that seems to be the culture or the appropriate thing to do. So I came up with some language that I thought would try to address that, and I'm just, I'm going to throw it out there, but I would love to get your input, and then I'll refine it, and then we'll see where it goes from there. What I put together was, understands the foundations of our countries, of our country, and our rights, comma, privileges, and responsibilities. Something along those lines. I've been playing with this for a good while, so there's plenty of room to play with it some more, but I'll repeat it again. Understands the foundations, foundations plural, of our country, and our rights, privileges, and responsibilities. So again, the theme is some way of capturing what we expect all of our students to understand and appreciate about our form of government, kind of, if you will. Abe Lincoln, or actually, as I've learned today in looking at this, is from the Bible, that government of the people, by the people, for the people, in essence, trying to capture that same sense of our philosophy and intent and make sure that that's an understanding that all of our students take with them at the time they graduate. So I would appreciate any comments or thoughts you might have about that.
Thank you, Mr. Stork. Ms. Hines.
Thank you. Yeah, actually, I'm thinking about that. I think that sounds good. You know, we talk about, and I'll have to give it some more thought, but we talk about the first sentence there under global citizen, consider diverse perspectives when considering local, national, and world issues. So I think that knowing where their own national culture fits in is important, and it's certainly something we think that we do for kids when they leave us, that they do understand that. So I'm glad you brought that up. I'm going to go back to the fifth column, and I apologize if I'm repeating what's already been said. You know, I showed this to my representative on Student Health Advisory Committee, and she, her immediate reaction was that it's all about goals and it's all about doing well, it's all about well, it's all about succeeding. And there's just one little note in the top sentence about mental wellness, and it's really the only place, I think, in there where we talk about just mental wellness for its own sake. And I think that's what bothers me about it. If the, if the title can't be changed, that's fine, but I don't see any other language in there. You know, everything else talks about overcoming academic and personal barriers to meet goals. That sounds very, you know, academic, goal-oriented. "Uses time to set challenging goals, complete tasks, and manage projects." Again, this is just, this is what I'm doing as a student. This is not kind of what I'm doing to maintain my own internal balance and wellness and health. "Shows strong understanding and belief of self to engage in reflection," sounds good, but then for individual improvement and self-advocacy. Again, it's, it's not about just, "I'm just a healthy person, and I have some balance in my soul." And then finally, "Acts responsibly and ethically to build trust and lead." Building trust is good, but leading, not all of our students are going to be leaders. And again, it feels pushy. It feels like we're asking a lot of them in this column, which I think, so I guess I, I don't, again, I don't have an answer. But if there's some way that we could put more language in there, change some of it to talk more about, you know, leave the goal-directed in there at the top, if that's what people wanted to see. But I feel like I need more in there about just, you know, being, being balanced and mentally well and healthy, and maybe cut back a little bit on the language that seems just very ambitious, that it's really all about ambition. That's how it comes off sounding. So, and I just put that in there. And a general question that I have, and if you've already asked it and I missed it, I'll take it offline, but I think one of the conversations that might already be starting to happen about this is whether this is really for every graduate? Is this a portrait of every graduate? Or have we somehow set up something that's only going to be for some students, and that we're still leaving some students behind? We had some, you know, testimony the other night from COTS that talked about how we don't need this, we just need to, you know, continue to close the gaps, that that's where our focus should be. My own feeling is that this is a way of addressing the gaps, because the best way to address the gaps is high expectations for all, and reasonable and meaningful expectations for all. So I just kind of wanted to put, if you hadn't already talked about it, to put that out there, as I don't, I hope that we don't end up with that conversation about this, because I don't think it's helpful. It's my own feeling as a teacher, that this is what all children respond to, and this is what's good for all children, so this is the expectation we have for all children, that we are not setting up a track with this. This is for everybody. So just mention that.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Has anybody else not spoken that wants to? Because I have several go-backs. All right. First go-back, Ms. McGlocklin.
I guess the first thing I want to say is, Mr. Stork, thank you for bringing this to our attention under Global Citizen. If you look at just even the way the form is, it's the one that's kind of the shortest column. We've got space to put in there, and I'm not about filling up space, but I am about the fact that we have limited space. Let's not lose an opportunity to capture some very important statements to our community. And when I think about Global Citizen, I absolutely think about, you know, yes, we think about the world, but we also think about what's the world we live in right now. And when you think about how the United States, the temperature in this country right now is, we've lost faith in our leaders and our public officials. More and more people are just withdrawing and saying, "I'll just take care of what's in my own backyard, because I, you know, lost faith that it matters to get engaged or make a difference." Or some just continue to say, "I'm not going to lose faith," but they do just come to the local level, and they give countless hours of time, as we know, with the tremendous amount of volunteers we have in our community. But I don't think we captured that in here. And, and so this goes again to some of the words that Ms. Ree brought up, compassionate, engaged. I mean, those are things that absolutely, no matter what you end up pursuing in life, whatever your, your college or career path will be, I hope we raise people who want to be engaged, that so much of this seems very, you know, centered to the individual. And when you look at our, our student achievement goals, the very top, you know, responsibility to community and world, and yet, well, why, why bother having responsibility to community unless it's because you're engaged, and you're compassionate, and you care? So I do, I really appreciate Ms. Darnett Kofax giving us the history behind how we got to goal-directed as a header, but it still hasn't convinced me that when you think about what we're trying to capture here, I don't, I don't believe that goal-directed ended up being a primary word that we wanted to necessarily capture when you look at all five. And I think that's where you're getting me struggling. It's interesting, one of our other colleagues talked about what the younger parents are. You know, my youngest is in ninth grade, but I'm not that old. And I actually happen to think that what my parent, what, what my parents wanted for me, what my grandparents wanted for my parents, and what the young parents want for their kids, has not really changed, because I will believe in the last four generations, and in fact, the way this country was founded, is it does care very much beyond self. And if we miss that point, I don't think that's about being out of touch, or inserting my own individual values onto this thing. I actually think, as someone with a social work background, I'm thinking very much about making sure we really capture something that says we're graduating people here who care about their, their world beyond themselves.
Mine, I don't want to bog us down, because as someone pointed out, we could wordsmith forever, but I kind of try something out, just, just for kicks. This originally had Self-Directed was the title, the header on, on the fifth one, but because of feedback we got, we changed it to Goal-Directed. Does Self-Directed help, does that, is that better? And we can integrate caring, we can, I mean, I get those themes need to be better represented in that last column. We heard you, we'll work on that, and I do, we'll work on what Dan suggested in column three. But in terms of a header, in absence of another recommendation with the word, is Self-Directed, is Self-Directed better? That's what the committee originally had.
It's just still about self. We've got nothing in here that says, "Are you a caring individual?" Like, I loved what Patty said, "You could be all these things and be a horrible human being that doesn't, you know, do anything beyond self to make the world a better place." And that's, I think, what concerns me, when you look across the headers, which people are correct, they mean I can get down beyond the headers. And I just think...
I'm looking for a solution.
I know, that's why. I still, I still think that caring, do you want to graduate people who are compassionate and resilient? In my mind, if you're compassionate resilient, then you're not only strong within self, but you're caring about those around you. Goal-directed can be, as Ms. Darnett Kofax said, we got caring implied in there. Well, why aren't we just having goal-directed under one of the things that's important about being resilient? But compassionate has got to be at the forefront, in my mind, of what we want our graduates to be.
I know. I think we, I'll, I'll let Sandy speak to Karen's point, and then I do think we are getting to that point where we're overanalyzing. I, and I think, yeah, I'll, I'll let Sandy speak. I will speak for one second on that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, we do have two proposals out on the table, other than Self-Direct. I don't think Self-Direct did it, there was pushback on that. But I'm just going to, I guess I would, Tammy, what, what I'd like to do is get a sense of the board, if, if our colleagues would be willing to just add, not subtract, but add the word either caring or balanced. You know, I said balance, well, or, well, let's, let's leave it, you know, either caring or balanced, and if there's at least a sense that we could add that word to the header. I mean, I'd just like to get a sense, so we don't, either we can continue on or not continue on.
Okay, I'll get back to that. Mr. Moon, you have a comment?
I'm sure we have had numerous opportunities to discuss and think about this, that, you know, my suggestion will be, this will be coming up for vote.
Next Thursday.
For adoption at the next Thursday meeting, next Thursday. You know, if board members who do, who are advocating certain changes could have come up with amendments, and if they could, you know, circulate those amendments, you know, giving us some heads up, some advance notice, so that we could all start thinking about those a little more, and come to a resolution on next Thursday, rather than trying to do whole thing today. We already, forty minutes behind.
I understand that, and, and, yeah, I was going to state that, that, you know, to have amendments by Friday, so we can post them on Monday. Ms. Evans, I'll just speak to your point, and Karen as well. I felt the committee felt very strongly against Self-Directed, because that's where there were comments made, that my child cannot be self-directed, and that's why it was Goal-Directed. That, that was that point. I would, just so you, since you asked the question, Ms. Evans, I would be willing to do that, but the way I would like to do it, as Mr. Moon said, is to bring forward amendments on Friday and talk about that. Or talk individually with Karen, and then we can, you know...
Well, couldn't we get a sense of the board? I mean, this is a work session. Couldn't we get a sense of the board if there's some...
Sure, we can, we can do that. But Ms. Schultz wants to speak on this, on Karen's comment, and then I'll do that.
Okay, just a couple very quick points. One, I think that Dr. Garza should be allowed to do a final cut where she synthesizes what she's heard from us, and put in, you know, wherever you think you can work it in, show it to us, and then we can amend or whatever after that. Because you've heard a lot, and I think that you have some good ideas. Two, absolutely, Mr. Stork, and if anybody remembers the original conversation, that's what I was saying originally, is that if you don't have the foundations, I mean, we're in the Commonwealth, George Mason, George Washington, James Madison, I mean, that's without a shadow of a doubt, and to me, that should have been included originally, because everybody coming here and then having their own individual communities doesn't help. You have to be, come a part of the American community. So I'm fully in favor of doing something to encapsulate that. And I get the sense from the board that somehow success is a dirty word, and personal success isn't the same thing from student to student and child to child. And I think that's the thing that we're getting lost in, because there is that culture in Northern Virginia of that success thing, but, but the success, Ms. Chairman, that you were discussing, that special ed student parent spoke about, that's success for that child. And, and we have to not, I mean, we're somewhat tainted by that, that success lens, but the success that we're trying to communicate is the success for that parent, for their student. And having goals is not a bad thing. Being a resilient, you know, student is not a bad thing, but it's resilient from where they are. Not like everybody's getting to the same finish line, because it's a different finish line based upon where they start. And if they're a hampered individual, I mean, it's, it's okay that their goals are going to be microgoals, or small goals, or short goals. And, and I, I think we need not lose that aspect of it, because what, I wasn't there for that special education parent that you're describing, but I can, just from the way that you're communicating it, I get it. And so, personal success for that child may be through the arts, it may be being able to dress themselves, it may be, you know, having a 4.9 GPA. It doesn't matter, it doesn't all have to be the same. So I don't want us to taint or lose that goal-directed is a good thing and means different things to differently capable, differently abled students.
Madam Chair, with the permission of the board, I'd like to have one day to try, I think we can reflect some of this conversation, and it might simplify things when it comes to the board table. I mean, I'm hoping if we do a good job...
Okay.
So we've got a lot of smart people on staff, I'm sure that we can make some adjustments that meet your needs. And at Mr. Stork's, if, unless there's something we missed, I think I captured it pretty well.
So if you could, if you could get back to us, say, with a revised copy reflective of our comments by Wednesday, and then we could look at that as well, and at that point...
And then from that point forward, should you need to...
Make any kind of amendments, we could do that. I promised Ms. Evans that I would take a quick sense of the board, not changing, but adding a word in there, be it balanced or caring, in the last column, so she can decide which way to move forward. Who would be in support of adding that, that caring or balanced in that last column under goal-directed? It could be goal-directed, balanced, and resilient, it could be goal-directed, caring, and resilience, or there may be another.
No.
No, it was, we're talking the heading. We're talking specifically, Ms. Evans specifically spoke to the heading. So given that scenario, who may be supportive of that? All right, well, you have that, so, three.
Eleven of us.
Seven, okay. All right. All right, thank you, thank you all. I have one more go-back, Ms. Strauss.
I was just going to encourage to let, give Karen a chance to wordsmith this, because I think you've heard, you guys are very, you are much better than we are.
But that means, don't, I mean, I need to know, because some of this is, you know, I'd heard it today. So if you get, get it to me, I promise you we'll reflect your thoughts.
Exactly. Please be, be very conscientious of that deadline. She will get something to us on Wednesday. We have until Thursday at the close of business, perhaps, to respond to, well, just as quickly as possible. And then, you know, based upon that, we can make any amendments or revisions.
Yeah, the reason this is important, moving to this next component that we're going to talk about strategic, is the strategic plan, is we need to feel like this is, this is at some point approved, finalized, stamped by the board, because we've been talking about it a lot. I've been very impressed with our schools, or many of them are taking and running with it and doing great things. But we need official on the part of the board, and then we'd like for this to be a major component of the work that's done at the Education Summit, to unveil this, along potentially with some goal, strategic goal statements, which would be the next component. So that's, that's why it's important, I think, to have board approval on this.
So staff will get us something back by Wednesday. We will have beginning amendments on Friday. I would like to take a five-minute break from the tape, not to go anywhere before, but I would like us to take a field trip up to this wall to refresh ourselves with what we had said should be part of a strategic plan in our last retreat. And then Mr. Smith will go forward from there.
The first three chart, there's six of them there, but the first three sections, those were the seventeen findings that Ekra, Gina, and Hank brought to you all, from all the 30,000 stakeholders that weighed in, and the remainder you'll recognize as committee work from you all.
So what I would like you to do is, I would like you to look at that and see if, you know, the things that are put out, as far as the four buckets, as well as the tagline that's under the buckets, as to what the strategic plan will be under that heading, to, as we go forward. If we refresh ourselves with these, we'll see if that's what was reflected, if, if staff reflected our needs, given our conversations at the retreat. So a break to look at the wall.